Hello, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 8th. The time is 5:30. And we are here today at the City of Capell for our regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council. We have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order, and we will be moving into executive session. Thank you. Okay. The time is 6:16. Yikes. And we will move into work session. Are there any items on work session that anybody -- any items on the regular agenda that anybody has any questions or comments about? I will let you all know that on item F, I need to recuse myself. So Mayor Pro Tem is going to take over for the entire consent agenda item. So when I call for item 10, I'm going to turn it over to him. I'm going to leave, let you do the consent agenda, and then I'll be back. And then I understand that -- Item 11, the Honorable Cliff Long will be recusing himself from that item. And then item 18 is going to be pulled. They are not prepared. 18? That's the one about the future IQ. Okay. So any other questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none. Okay. Discussion regarding legislative priorities. Mr. Land.
Mayor and Council, this evening, on your agenda, you will have an opportunity to approve the legislative priorities. For the last month and a half or so, we've provided you an outline of those priorities. You discussed this at your November meeting, and so the document that you have goes forward with those comments. I will tell you that, from a priority standpoint, we have one major priority. I'm not sure that we will be 100% successful, but we are going to be working diligently with our team on the sales tax sourcing legislation. Language has been drafted to be submitted for consideration when the session starts in January. Basically, what it does is try to affirm, or it does affirm, the existing statute that secures origination sourcing as opposed to destination sourcing. That's the simplest explanation. So that will be occupying a lot of our time and trying to work with other cities to get that legislation passed. The second item of priority is dealing with the street sales and use tax. You know, we were really close last session to having that legislation approved that basically would have allowed us to go out to 10 years as opposed to the four-year renewal. And the idea would be that we could start getting that to cycle with our crime control so that we don't have to have these multiple different times for elections and do those for 10 years as well. There are multiple other issues that we'll be watching. For example, the short-term rental, if you recall, that was a big item on discussion last session. Making sure that we still have the right to monitor that and correct any issues that may occur. The building materials, if you recall, that's one that affected us as well, along with many other cities. The issue with that legislation is the presumptive Speaker of the House is the person who introduced that bill. So I'm not so sure that we'll have success in getting some of that cleaned up, but we know that there is going to be a lot of effort centered around that. The other areas are continuing to watch the property tax revenue cap. Granted, that passed in 2019, and we want to make sure or do our best not to have the state legislature issue any other kind of statutes or laws that restrict our ability to raise revenues when it's appropriate. So that gives you an overview of the legislative priorities, as we'll be working on them and we see them. You know, if you've been following the information about the Senate and the House, there's a high likelihood there aren't going to be a whole lot of bills that will be considered. There may be a whole lot of bills that are introduced, which there already have been, that in fact impact cities, but the information is that it may be difficult to get any of those bills actually to the floor. That's the reason why we'll be spending so much time on the sales tax sourcing legislation. There's also a question of how they're going to allow testimony. We do not know how that's going to work out yet. You probably saw on the news where the Lieutenant Governor mentioned in the Senate that you'll have to have an appointment, you'll have to be tested 72 hours in advance. So there's going to be a logistical challenge to us as we look to the legislative session as well. Plus, the census data that comes out may not come out till later in the session, and if that occurs, there's a chance that there will be a special session called for redistricting purposes. So we're, again, based on the input we've received, this is the document we will use for our talking points, and that is what is on your agenda to close out the meeting tonight. So be happy to answer any questions.
I got one.
Mike.
I was just talking to the guy next to me. Thank you. Is there any reason to give us a glimmer of hope on the source-based taxing?
There's always hope. The issue, I mean, I'll be straightforward. I mean, this is an issue that the state comptroller's taken on, and that's what we're up against. It's going to be us working towards trying to clean up the bill, clean up the statute, excuse me. I mean, we're not even talking about the rule. This is cleaning up the existing statute, 323, and putting language in place that affirms what we believe it says it's supposed to be, and that is origin sourcing. Do I believe it will be successful in it? If you follow the legislature, it's very difficult to get a first-time bill passed the first time that you introduce it into legislation, you know, as far as getting it through the legislature. So it's a tough road. There's no question.
And in this particular legislation year or legislative year, it's probably going to be more difficult than ever. The only glimmer of question that I've been able to get a cocked head on is when I'm talking to either a senator or a representative is, "So you guys are comfortable allowing the comptroller, whoever the comptroller is, to change the meaning of what the legislature intended?" And they went, "Huh?" And when I explained it to them, they went, "Oh, huh. Hadn't really thought of it that way." So whenever you have an opportunity, you can say, "How do you feel about the comptroller changing legislation through writing the rules?" Just a thought. It's the only way I've been able to get anybody to even --
Think about it.
-- get their attention. So bijou.
Thank you, Mayor. My question for you. Do we have any more new cities joined us on this fight?
No. John Kroll, who y'all have met remotely, probably, but I think you've met in person before. I think John's come here before. You know, John is our, and I don't mind saying this, he's our sales tax geek, right? I mean, this is what he lives and does. John has been successful in talking to some other cities. He has also been successful speaking with certain associations in the business community. So I would say that there is progress being made broader than just cities, which I think is really important. So there's a, there appears to be some momentum with those trade associations that may benefit us in this process, which will be very, very helpful.
And the only other thing that is in our list is, and the Senate had a hearing today talking about --
Lobbying.
I'm trying to think of what the other word is, so I don't have to put a dollar in the pocket. Community advocacy, which is the term that TML is using instead of taxpayer-funded lobbyists. There is a, going to be a new video out talking about, it's under that whole, so that same situation or the same header as Our Home, Our Decisions, allowing us to make those decisions ourselves. So that is something that may or may not get some traction, but you might want to put that in your list as well.
And Mayor, I spoke, because of everything going on, stress level. Crystal listened in on the Senate hearing today for this discussion, and there were two advocates, two proponents, I guess, and there were two who did not want the, you know, quote, "taxpayer-funded" spending for that purposes. And she indicated that the committee, you know, asked several questions of all parties, and one of the root issues came down to, "How are you going to determine the difference between educating and advocacy?" And if you read the charge that the Senate had, it talked about it in terms of this idea of somehow or another not in the best interest of the taxpayer. So if you think about that question, everything we do is for the benefit of the taxpayer in terms of our motivation, our drive, when the citizens vote on whatever it is they vote on, when y'all take a vote. And so this idea of where this line is between education and advocacy, it'll be fascinating to see how that discussion goes. Part of, one of the things that Crystal reported today, by the way, you can, it's recorded, so it's online for the Senate hearing. One of the comments was, "Well, there's nothing that prevents," actually, there's federal law, according to what I understand, there is federal law that allows cities to spend money on lobbying at the national level. And, but for the state of Texas, those who are proponents for having no funding, somehow or another, at the state level, they know better than you do at, I mean, that's literally how the conversation goes, to prevent you from having a voice at the state level. So then it became this parsing of words, if you will, between, "Well, what's the difference between education and advocacy?" Then another question came up, which I thought was, I mean, it's a natural progression of this discussion, is, "Okay, we are not going to allow you to contract with a private person to lobby, advocate, educate. So therefore, now cities will hire someone with staff, and that will be government relations." So here, we did it this way, and there's nothing that prevents you from doing it this way. And at the end of the day, aren't you accomplishing the same goal?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just to add to that, Mike, to me, that's the biggest value we get when there's 6,000-plus bills, that somebody's going through them every day, making sure that if they affect us, we have a chance to have a voice. And if we weren't able to hire lobbyists to do that, I think we would have to pay a staff member to do that, and so what have you accomplished, right?
And what prevents a group of cities to come together and hire one person, two people, put them on as part-time people, their staff? Isn't that kind of what we do? You just, whether they're, anyway. There's so many ifs.
The point that we made, especially on the sales tax sourcing, was you hear something that has an impact throughout the state. It has a significant impact, negative impact, on the City of Capell, and the expectation is that we'll be going around to the 150 state representatives and the 31 state senators to plead our case, to educate and support. That's why we jokingly said it'd be easier for us just to get an apartment in Austin and just plant ourselves down there, because that's the only way we're going to be able to get around to visit with them.
And that's what we were all elected to do.
It did turn green. So I did a real quick little, just for the fun of it, to see how much it would cost to put someone down in an apartment or in a hotel room for the duration of the session, just to support Mike's statement. And it was three or four times more than what we're currently paying. So, you know, it was a ridiculous amount. So whether we band together with other cities and hire permanent staff, hire permanent staff, it's definitely going to be more expensive to do it that way, because you have to have people that are living down there.
Okay. Anything else on this topic? Seeing none. Item C, Ms. Hurley, are you with us to talk about the update on the CARES Business Assistance Grants?
I am. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Glad to see you.
Thank you. Nice to see you as well. Now that we've closed out all of the Business Assistance Grant programs, we wanted to give you a brief report to update you on what the city was able to do for the businesses in Capell with these grants. Next slide, please. The city received close to $2.3 million in CARES Act funds. City Council generously allocated $1.65 million to Business Assistance Grants. And just to kind of wrap up, City Council and Dallas County approved three different grant programs. The Capell CARES Restaurant Assistance Grant, the Capell CARES Business Retrofit Grant, and the Capell CARES Business Rent/Mortgage Assistance Grant. Next slide, please. Through these three programs, the city was able to approve 102 applications for Capell businesses and awarded a total of $1,099,090 in grants to businesses. So that breakdown is as follows. There were 22 restaurant assistant grants that were awarded for a total of $139,810. There were 20 business retrofit grants that were awarded for a total of $70,280. And then finally, there were 60 business rent/mortgage assistance grants that were awarded for a total of $889,000. So once again, the total that we gave out was $1,099,090 in grants through, to businesses through these three programs. Next slide, please. All of the remaining funds of that $1.65 million were reallocated by City Council to various projects and programs over the last several months. So just wanted to let you know that a final report will be brought to you after the first of the year detailing how all of the CARES Act funds were spent, but we just wanted to give you the report tonight specifically about the Business Assistance Grants. And so I'd just like to end this report by telling you how much the businesses in Capell appreciated your willingness to dedicate these funds to the, to help them during this difficult time. And I had numerous businesses that asked for me to pass along their gratitude for all that you've done to support them this past year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you, Mindy. Any questions, comments? Nancy?
Thank you. Mindy, I just want to say, oh, sorry, yelling. I just want to say thanks for all your help with that, because I know it meant a lot to all those businesses. I did have one of the businesses reach out to me. They were very excited about getting it, and so I know it made a big impact on them and took some stress off them during this crazy time, one of the restaurants. So thanks for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We do appreciate you being the face of the city on that particular front, because people are very comfortable walking up to you and your staff to talk about this stuff. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being here tonight. Update on DART construction activities. We have Tracy Leach here. There she is.
I am here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to provide a briefing to you on some of the construction activities that are going to be occurring fairly soon and provide a preview of some of the documents that I will be bringing to the Council for your consideration right after the first of the year to help facilitate some of those construction activities. Our goal, as we've been working with DART and AWH, is really to be flexible enough to allow them to stay on their preferred construction schedule, knowing that we have yet to finalize the conveyance of the property that we own that's located in the City of Dallas that will ultimately become the Cypress Waters Rail Station. We have been working with DART and the city attorney to finalize the document for the actual conveyance, and we do anticipate that that will probably be brought to the Council likely in February. But before that occurs, there is some construction activity that is slated to occur in between now and February when we have the ILA finalized. And so those are the activities that I want to cover with you tonight. There are a number of different site prep and pre-construction activities that are likely to occur. Some of those activities are really low maintenance, so things like geotechnical staking, there's some fence work that needs to be done so that we can secure the cattle that are on the property, once they tear down the existing fence to do some of the construction. All of those low-intensity activities, we at the staff level are proposing to handle just administratively through the city manager's office, and that is really very similar to what we've done up to this point for similar activities, for example, surveying or allowing folks onto the property for appraisal purposes and that sort of thing. And so for anything that's just low intensity, we will continue to handle those administratively. There are some other activities that are going to be higher intensity, so grading, grubbing, clearing, the whole property that will be used for the station and the rail ride away. We had received a draft of a document, which was essentially a temporary right of entry, that would allow DART and AWH to go ahead and complete a lot of those types of activities in between the time when they were going to go ahead and move in and mobilize and when we have the ILA finalized for the conveyance. That document is not as tight in terms of scope as we would like to see, and so we are currently working with DART right now. So Bob Hager's working with the attorneys over at DART to tighten up some of the language in that right of entry so that we can be very specific about what kinds of activities that we would be authorizing for the property while we're in that middle space between now and when we have the final conveyance done. So we anticipate having that temporary right of entry brought to the Council for your consideration, the first meeting in January, and that would allow DART to stay on a schedule that they're comfortable with in terms of the construction activities. I've got with me tonight David Ehrlich with DART, who would be happy to answer any DART-specific questions that you might have in the way of the actual construction, and I'll be happy to answer any of the other questions that you might have related to this topic in terms of the activities that we anticipate occurring on our property there at the City of Dallas.
I feel, I feel that things are actually moving, which is, I can't say that I've felt that historically. I always felt like, "Well, we're talking about this, and we're talking about that," but I feel like things are actually coming together. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Again, thank you, Tracy, for your concentrated effort on this and attention to detail, because there is a lot of detail. But thank you. Nancy?
Thanks, Mayor. Tracy, I just want to say thanks as well for all the hard work. I know you've worked really hard on this project. Keep continuing on, and I'll be looking from afar to see how you progress with it. So --
Thank you.
Good luck, and thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you.
I'll probably have to call her to tell her that something's happened, but yeah.
Maybe.
Okay. Anything else for work session? There is not. So we are adjourned from work session at 6:41, and we will be back at 7:30 for regular session. Thank you. Okay, the time is 7:30, so we will move into regular session. Tonight, we will start with our invocation with Councilmember Roden assisting us with that. And then we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Roden.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, tonight we pray for our city and its people. We pray for those who night and day maintain public services, for police officers and firefighters, for all who respond to emergency, and for all whose work is in health care, healing, and social care. Keep them safe as they continue to work tirelessly for their fellow citizens. Dear Heavenly Father, send down upon our elected public servants the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. We pray for open mind and listening ears, that as leaders, we would be open to wise counsel from voices throughout our community. And we ask that you remind us that all people are beautiful, wonderful children of God who are deserving of a safe place to live, work, and raise their families. For these many blessings in our community, we give you thanks. In your name we pray. Amen.
And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Item six is citizens' appearance. Do we have anybody who has signed up for citizens' appearance? None. And no emails? No emails. Okay. So now we will move to item seven, which is the swearing-in of Council Place Three. We're going to do this a little differently. Let's see. Can you hear me if I'm back here? Just speak really loudly.
We can.
You can? Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And please say this oath after me. I state your name.
I, Wes Mace.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Then I will faithfully execute.
Then I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the Office of City Council, Place Three.
The duties.
Of the City of Capel, State of Texas.
Of the City of Capel, State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution of laws.
Of the United States and of this state.
And of the United.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Go.
Thank you.
And I have one other item from that particular election in a very unique situation because our our election was held in November. I have the following to honor one of our own. "The roots of true achievement lie in the will to become the best you can become. In recognition of true achievement, in November of 2020, the Honorable Cliff Long received the highest number of votes in the history of the City of Capel municipal election, Okay. I couldn't let that go without that significant achievement. And as long as the voting continues to be in May, that number will stand. I can't say that it will always be in May, but congratulations. Pass that down to Ashley. Okay, and then, item eight. Council, please consider this proclamation naming December 8, 2020, as Nancy Yingling Appreciation Day and authorize the mayor to sign. Please consider. Whereas Nancy Yingling has served as a council member since 2014 and will retire effectively December 8, 2020. Whereas Nancy is being honored by family and fellow council members who are deeply appreciative of her many contributions to the community through the years. Whereas Nancy has, with enthusiasm and effectiveness, made an excellent and constructive contribution to our community. Whereas Nancy, over her tenure as an elected official, served as the city liaison to the North Texas Commission and the Dallas College Capel Center. Whereas, her service in both her public and private life has been given willingly and cheerfully, and she has contributed immeasurably to the excess of the community's endeavors and to the betterment and the quality of life for many of her fellow citizens. Whereas Nancy is known for her dedication and tireless service to Capel, it has been and has been an important resource, advocate, and friend to our community. Now therefore I, Karen Hunt, the Mayor of the City of Capel, do hereby proclaim December 8, 2020, as Nancy Yingling Appreciation Day. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capel to be affixed this eighth day of December 2020. Council. Councilmember Mace.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I was on the wrong page. To approve item number eight, a proclamation naming December 8, 2020, as Nancy Yingling Appreciation Day and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Second by Councilmember Hina Jose Smith. All in favor? Yes, you vote.
Long, Hina Jose Smith, Mace Roden, Yingling Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
This again is a weird time. Got the shield?
Stand up.
Oh.
We can take a picture, too.
Okay. As you can see, we'll go to item nine. There are a few presentations that we would like to give. I don't know if you can see below. There is some flowers and a couple of things. We took the time during the intermission to give her the gift from the council, which was engraved wine craft and glasses. So I hope you understand how much you mean to us, and thank you very much. We have Chief Richardson here. To, Chief, do you want to address Ms. Yingling?
Yes. First of all, thank you for allowing me the opportunity. I'd just like to add some comments to the proclamation that you just have renewed. First of all, I want to congratulate you, Nancy, on a fine public service career. I just want to kind of share some of my thoughts. Nancy and I go back almost 20 years now. And when I first met Nancy, it was just prior to September 11, 2001. And when that day had happened, as we all can remember, communities across the United States rallied together, and Nancy was one of the leaders in our community to kind of take the lead and take charge of several events in our community. One of them was a fundraiser event. She approached us to coordinate a charity game between the Police Department and the Fire Department to raise funds for a relief fund for the 9/11 events. So we did that, and Nancy was a big part of providing that leadership and coordinating that whole program. And we, the efforts raised thousands of dollars. Shortly after that, Nancy and some of our firefighters traveled together to New York City, where they went to Ground Zero, met face-to-face with some of the first responders that were there, felt their pain, and presented that relief fund check to another person, and that meant a lot. That was just the beginning. That was nearly 20 years ago. And since that time, Nancy and I teamed up on so many other things. She was paying back and participated in numerous other fire department events. She was one of our very first CERT team members, which stands for Community Emergency Response Team. She spent weeks after weeks after weeks going through training at night, learning these skills that were designed to help community members, to help our community in the event of a disaster. We came certified in all kinds of areas of emergency response. And she just continued to participate in many, many other fire department events and open houses and any other thing that the police department publicly safely. Nancy's always been a supporter and one of the best for the community. She's done that with the support for the Fire Department in maintaining our fleet and our accreditations and our standards to make sure that our community had the highest level opportunities for protection and to be just a safe community. And I want to share with you that when a firefighter first becomes a firefighter, their helmet means a lot to them, and it actually serves as a symbol. And as a recruit firefighter, they must complete all their training and then go through a year-long probationary process, successfully pass all of the requirements, just to officially earn the right to wear that helmet. It's very symbolic for us. So what I'd like to do is read to you our firefighter's creed and what that means. It goes like this. It says, "My helmet is a symbol of honor and heritage bestowed upon me by the heroes that have gone before me and embodies the trust of those that I have sworn to protect. By wearing this helmet, I accept the responsibility of my chosen profession, and it is a privilege that I must earn every day. My loyalty to this community and my crew is beyond reproach, and I humbly serve as a guardian to my community, always ready to respond to those who are unable to help themselves. I voluntarily accept the inherent hazards of my profession, placing the welfare and security of others before my own. I am a firefighter." And so tonight, Nancy, with the little help from Ms. Ashley, who's not there, Ashley, can you help me out? It's on behalf of the entire Capel Fire Department, past and present, because I've been knowing you for many years, we'd like to present to you with your own Capel Fire Department helmet and shield as a token of our appreciation. You have earned that. It does not say a probationary firefighter. It says firefighter. So I want to say congratulations on retirement and thank you for making Capel a special place. And that's not what I intended to happen, but.
Well, you know, you've known me for 20 years, so I get like this. But wow, I didn't expect this.
Thank you very much.
I didn't expect this at all, so this is means a lot. It's really cool.
You've earned it.
Well.
You're always welcome to come by any of the fire stations.
Yeah, I'll be around. I'll be around. I'm not going to, I'm not going to be sitting here anymore, but I will be around. I've lived here for 30 years. You can't get rid of me yet. So, thank you so much. This was, please share my gratitude to all the stations and all the crews and everybody that this really was heartfelt, very touching. Thank you. Barbara told me, she goes, "You're going to cry," and I'm like, "Oh, I'm not going to cry." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for allowing me some time, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have one last plaque from the citizen, or on behalf of the citizens of Capel, is, "This is presented to Nancy Yingling with gratitude and deep appreciation for her years of dedicated service to the city and the citizens of Capel." And it states the dates of your mayor pro tem and your council member, 2014 to 2020.
Okay. You guys are.
Okay, now Nancy, do you have any words?
Yes, I do. Let's see if I can get through this, right? Okay, I do. Thank you. And I wrote it down because it'll be easier this way. I can just don't have to, I'm just going to read it because you can tell I get a little emotional. So, well, this day has finally arrived.
But you're not really here.
Yeah, I'm not supposed to be here, is the running joke here. After the delay in the election because of COVID, I hung out for an extra six months, so. And equally as exciting is we will find out tonight, hopefully, who will be sitting in this seat. There are so many people to thank, and usually they are here to share my appreciation, but tonight's a little different due to the pandemic. So, first, thanks to all the people who put me in this seat, the citizens. I hope I've served you well over the years. And through the many debates and decisions that have been made, I always walked into a meeting or a discussion with these two criteria in mind. Always keep an open mind, and how will it best serve the city as a whole? Mayor and fellow council members, it's been a pleasure serving alongside of you. Place Five landed smack dab in the middle between Gary Roden and Marvin Franklin when I first was elected. They were the guiding lights for the first couple of years. Former council member Marvin and I used to play a game predicting what time the meeting would end. We'd get on our agendas and we would put down the time and we would circle it. We would see who win. Some nights, we were way off. And Gary, thanks for always pushing a piece of candy over my way, although we have a little divider here now. But the two of you were always there to lend advice and share thoughts with me. Gentlemen, thank you for your mentorship, so. And Mayor, we have had many good times and discussions. We have had the opportunity to travel to other parts of the country to represent Capel. One of the best times with us was after the council meetings. Sometimes we would go hang out, and very rarely would we ever talk about city stuff. It was just a great time to unwind and hang out after a meeting and have fellowship. Happy to have had you as a colleague and happy to call you my friend. And to all the council members, we have spent many hours together in meetings and events. You remember events, don't you? Parades. I am sure life will get back to normal and the bonds will be renewed. Though we may not have always agreed on everything, we always walked away respecting each other's opinion and then moving on to the next challenge. I'm very happy to call each one of you my friend. Uh-oh, hold on. My, oh, here we go. Okay, here we go. I think they fell apart. To the staff, there's been a lot of transition in the last six-plus years, and I would say mostly from retirements and promotions. To Clay Phillips, our city manager when I was elected, we have been friends for many years, and I want to thank you for your transparency, communication, leadership, and most of all your friendship. We have and will continue to be friends as we move forward. To Mike Land, our current city manager, you had big shoes to fill and you stepped up to the plate. Who would have thought we would be sitting here dealing with so many issues at one time? Ruling 3334, a worldwide pandemic, so many small businesses struggling, and so much more. You tasked the entire staff to pivot and adapt to the changing times, and they rose to the occasion. Your leadership has kept our city on task and moving forward. The last year, it seems though, is you've been in the ring during a prize fight and taking one punch after another, only to return the punches back on your way to victory. You've done an outstanding job, and we are lucky to have you as our city manager, especially during these crazy times, and I too thank you for your friendship. I'd also like to take a few people I've known for quite some time, when I first really got involved in the city, when I organized a 9/11 event. Fire Captain Kevin Richardson, we have been friends for almost 20 years now, and your leadership in the department has been bar none, class A. I can't even tell you how much, how happy I was when I heard that you were going to be taking over as fire chief. So thank you so much, and I know that our friendship will continue. A few other firefighters that I've gotten to know over the years with my involvement with the 9/11 event, I'd like to thank Captain Tim Russell, Mike Wilson, Stuart Burris, and retired Scotty Baird, who's out there somewhere in Denton, I think on the school board. So, knowing each one of you has made me a better person. I'd like to thank Chief Danny Barton. I've gotten to know you over the last couple of years, and we're so lucky to have stepped up, have you step up upon Max's retirement. I wish every citizen knew how lucky they were to have you at the helm of our public safety in the police department. You are hands down the best. Paul Gonzalez, we have been friends for almost 20 years and since the 9/11 event. My, how time flies. You're doing such great things as our department's community liaison. I will continue to see you as I walk the trails. And Joe Boyd, who's sitting back there. You are a gentle giant. I know you always have my back. Thank you for making sure that we are always safe here at the council meetings, and making sure that I safely get to my car. I will miss you, I will miss seeing you on a regular basis. And Crystal Patinas, you have the patience of Job. You put up with me during my campaign in 2014. I had so many unique situations during that time. We won't go into detail, but you know what I mean. You sincerely kept me sane through the whole process. I will miss our conversations, I know we will see each other around. And thank you, Kimberly Tehan. I would also say that I have now learned more about water and sewer than any person should know, and I kind of enjoyed it. I really appreciated your upbeat presentations. Barbara, thank you for always providing an uplifting smile every time I walk through the doors of Town Center. You are a rock star. There are so many people to acknowledge, and if I spoke about everyone, I would keep the council here until after midnight, so I will keep moving on. And I know I will see some of you individually and be able to thank you for that. During my time on council, I was able to be involved in so many exciting capital improvement projects for the city. Some brought controversy and heated discussions, but in the end, I know our community is all the better for every single one of these projects. Being on the council has afforded me many opportunities, and I was able to serve nationally and regionally, as well as on different committees. One of the highlights on the national level is when I was invited to attend an event at the White House several years ago. I have to say, it's quite impressive, the screening process with the Secret Service. My life has evolved and changed a lot since I started on council back in 2014. Both of my children have graduated from college, both of my parents have passed on, and my husband has taken on exciting new job responsibilities and commitments at work. It has been a great six and a half years, but now it's time to say goodbye. I have found that sometimes, in order to grow, you have to move on. The winner of tonight's race is now, to the winner of tonight's race, it's now time to pass on the baton to you. I wish you all the best success as you move forward in your new role, and I ask that you always remember two things when you walk into a meeting. Always keep an open mind, and how will it best serve the city as a whole. I want to thank my family for being so supportive. I have spent many evenings away from you guys, and you were always very understanding. In fact, some may say a new tradition was born from my council meetings. Father-daughter dinners at Anamias on Tuesday nights. And there's one final person I'd like to send a shout out to tonight, Amy Swaim. After my father passed away in 2015, you knew I needed a hug, and you were there for me with a hug every time I saw you from that moment on. You will never know how impactful that was for me. So thank you, and thank you for being here. See, that's what happens when you have a lady retire from council, get all these emotions. It has been my honor and privilege to serve the city for the past six and a half years. Thank you for all your support and kindness. I may be gone from council, but I will still be around. Here's to 2021, and as Ann Frank says, "What a wonderful thought it is that some of the best days of our lives haven't happened yet." So thank you. And my lovely family, you are free to go.
It is usually our tradition that the other, the person who takes her place is now sworn in, and then she is, leaves, but...
With the family, yeah. I got business to do.
It's 2020, so we're doing it a little different. So she gets to spend the rest of the evening with us tonight, so. And you guys are welcome to stay.
Let's just wear one of us in.
But then Anamias is calling.
Thank you. But when I get home, I will need some help unloading some of this stuff here, so. Thank you. Thank you guys for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you for letting us have some of her time. Appreciate it.
Bye.
Merry Christmas. Okay. Item 10, I am going to recuse myself from item, for item F. So I am going to turn item 10 over to the mayor pro tem to handle the meeting from here on out, or just for this item. I will be back.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. The consent agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been issued or passed council actions. Any item may be pulled or considered separately. Full descriptions are available on screen. Does anyone wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Roden.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I move to approve item 10, items A through F.
And do we have a second? Raise your hand high. All right. Councilmember Yingling, second?
All right. All in favor? Long, Hina Jose Smith, Mays, Roden, Yingling, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Mayor, come on back.
Good job, Mark. That was fast. No, they were going to do that.
And now I have switched places with councilmember Long, who has recused himself from item 11. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and consider approval of PD 304H Nixon Pence Residential, a zoning change request from H Historic to PD 304H to allow for two residential units on 0.44 acres of land located on the west side of South Capel Road, approximately 175 feet south of West Bethel Road, at the request of the property owner, Anch LLC, being represented by Jory Brown with Hennessy Engineering. And we're going to turn this over to Matt Steer.
Mayor, council, good evening. Happy Nancy Yingling Day. And thank you, thank you for your service. This is located on the west side of South Capel Road, approximately 175 feet southwest Bethel Road, and the subject property is sandwiched between Burnett Street to the west and Capel Road to the east. In April of this year, the lot was cleared, and the existing residence on this lot was demoed. The initial plan was to build one residence. However, the proposal changed to what's currently being requested, two single-family residences, which is more in scale with the surroundings. Any residential within the historic district either requires an SUP or a PD zoning. So a PD is recommended in this case due to the shared driveway access off of Burnett. Next slide. One of the residences is proposed to be 3,880 square feet and one to be 4,190 square feet. They're both two-story, 28.5 feet in height. The architect has designed this project in a manner which is consistent with the main street project and the recently constructed house to the south. Each of the proposed residences are a similar height as the adjacent residence to the south, and they're both proposed to front on South Capel Road, will have the same setback from the street as the residence has the patio homes to the south and the residence to the south. A private drainage and utility easement, next slide, is proposed to run along the common property line. Each of the residences are providing two required enclosed parking spaces with the garages located at the rear of the site. Access to each of the garages is provided for via a curb cut from Burnett Street to a private mutual access easement. Next slide. Okay, next slide. There you go. Private mutual access easement coming off of Burnett Street, and it's shared by the two residences. They're proposing to relocate the landscape island, next slide. This landscape here, and construct a small one on the south side. Next slide. That's the way it'll end up. Next slide, please. In regards to landscaping, residential lots are not regulated in terms of landscape area calculations. The plant materials will match those used throughout Old Town regarding the tree survey. Tree survey indicates that there were 94 cal per inches of trees removed. Next slide. The landscape architect has worked diligently to propose enough trees on-site to mitigate for the trees removed. Next slide. They're proposing to plant four 6-cal per inch cedar elms, 10 3-cal per inch magnolias, three 6-cal per inch red oaks, and two 6-cal per inch October glory maples. Next slide. The proposed materials for each of the residences are representative of the arts and crafts architecture. Each of the residents will have a front and a side porch, with the southernmost having a second-story balcony in the front. Next slide. The southern residence is proposed to be primarily grayish brick with dark gray shutters and doors, and will have white accents. The northern residence is proposed to be constructed with greenish-gray horizontal sliding and brownstone. Will have brown and white accents. Next slide. We sent out 26 notices within 200 feet, and we received one letter in favor, none opposed, and then 152 courtesy letters within 800 feet and did not receive any response, either in favor or against. Next slide. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request, subject to the following conditions. Number one, detailed engineering review to take place with engineering permits submitted. For engineering review, submit site plan and plans for paving, grading, utilities, and erosion control. And two, submit a copy of the proposed draft private easements prior to plat recordation. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. We do have Jory Brown with Hennessy Engineering representing the applicant, also available. I see that we also have Austin Nixon, Lynn and Ralph Pence, and Mike Adams with the architectural firm. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steer. Does the owner have anything they would like to add? Or I guess, Jory Brown, is there anything you would like to add?
No, but if anybody has any questions, I would be happy to help.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
No one has signed up to speak, so I will turn it over to the council for any questions Seeing none, I will request a motion. Councilmember Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve item number 11, with conditions.
We have a second by councilmember Roden. All in favor?
Hina Jose Smith, Mays, Roden, Yingling, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
There you go. Thank you very much, and we look forward to kind of completing that look on that lot. Appreciate it. Item 12, consider approval of an ordinance of the city of Capel, amending the code of ordinances by amending Chapter 15, Other Codes Adopted, Articles 15-11 Swimming Pool and Spa Code to provide for the adoption of the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code 2018 edition and authorizing the mayor to sign. And we have Ms. Arnold here to walk us through this. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Tonight, we are considering the adoption of the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code with local amendments. Next slide, please. On September 10 of 2020, we brought this to the Building and Standards Commission. They voted unanimously to recommend adoption with amendment. Then on November 10 of 2020, we presented this to city council in work session, and no changes came out of either of those meetings. Next slide. Effective September 1 of this year, the state of Texas has made it mandatory to adopt this code for any municipality that enforces any pool and spa regulations. Next slide. This code book will be new to Capel, but it's part of the international family of building codes that the city has adopted. Our codes are published by the same organization and written to mesh well together. All building codes must be formally adopted into law by a jurisdiction, and a jurisdiction may amend a code if they so choose. Next slide, please. The International Swimming Pool and Spa Code as a building code is very much about life safety. It works on the belief that drowning is a preventable tragedy. These regulations work to minimize the risk of drowning and other injuries in pools. This code, in many respects, is written with children in mind, as they are... as they are the biggest users of pools and are the least capable of self-preservation. Next slide, please. Much of the content is not new to Capel. The Code of Ordinances also includes the adoption of the state standards for public swimming pools and spas in Section 918, and we adopted the pool barrier provisions from this Pool and Spa Code in 2017 as a part of the building codes in Chapter 15. Next slide. The code splits responsibility between public and private pools. Private residential pools are under the jurisdiction of building inspections, and public pools are governed by environmental health. This is also consistent with our existing practice. Next slide, please. An important part of this code focuses on keeping people out of your pool who don't belong there. It includes a minimum height for pool fences of 48 inches, criteria for gates being self-closing and self-latching, places a heavy emphasis on the climbability of your fence from the outside, including posts and rails having to be on the inside, and additional regulations on gaps and protrusions where someone could get a handhold or foothold and climb the outside of your fence. The code also requires door and window alarms, so you always know if someone has left your house to go out into the pool area, especially a child. And pool covers can also serve as pool barriers in some cases. Basically, this code aims to keep people out of your pool without your knowledge. It gives you every opportunity to be aware of and supervise whoever's in your pool. Next slide, please. Sadly, there have been many tragedies from people getting stuck down to the section of drains and pools. If you've ever dove down to feel that section on a single drain, you know what I mean. This code requires drains to be configured to prevent or break suction and prevent entrapment. Next slide. Pools also must be designed with physical safety in mind, and a good example of that would be pools with diving boards. There are minimum depth requirements for a minimum distance from a diving board to reduce the chances of a hard collision with the bottom of the pool. Code also addresses things like transitions in depth, stairs, ladders, ways to be safe and get out of the pool. Next slide, please. A jurisdiction may choose to amend a code they adopt. Now, our Central Texas Council of Governments has committees that analyze the codes and recommend amendments for cities in our region. Most of our proposed amendments do come from the Council of Governments. Their committees have already done the work of vetting the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code against the Texas state regulations. Of course, if any conflicts do exist between this code and any other laws or regulations, this district shall apply. Next slide, please. Locally, we're proposing code amendments that place greater emphasis on climbing prevention for horizontal fence members, particularly addressing the trend toward horizontal fence boards, including board-on-board fences, and the opportunities they create to be more climbable from the outside. Also stipulating that vehicular gates across driveways cannot be a part of the required barriers for residential pools. Next slide, please. So the state of Texas has made the adoption of the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code mandatory. But more than that, the comprehensive pool regulations in this code could save lives. Next slide. The Community Development Department is recommending the adoption with these amendments of the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. Next slide, please. Does council have any questions?
Thank you very much for that presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. Suzanne, at the beginning, you talked about the need for alarms to let the homeowner know if the back door or windows have been opened. Is it, do those alarms have to be active all the time, or can they be disabled by the homeowner if they so choose as long as they're in place?
They have to be of a nature that cannot be turned off.
So would that exclude, does that mean that you have to have some type of special alarm outside of the normal burglar alarm?
In many cases, yes. Unless the whole-house alarm can be set to have a continuous audible signal when the door is opened, then a supplementary alarm is needed.
And then, I know that during work session in September, we got a little convoluted with the spa and pool requirements and the fencing. How much of this is covered in the fencing requirement that we're going to cover under item 13 of the agenda? Or is it completely separate?
The pool provisions, the pool barrier provisions from this presentation, from the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, are being inserted into the fence ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Yingling.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number 12.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Mays. All in favor.
Long, Hannah Jose Smith, Mays, Roden, Yingling, Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. And item 13, again, Ms. Arnold will help us with that. Consider approval of the ordinance of the city of Capel amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 9, General Regulations, Article 9-2 Fence Regulations of the Code of Ordinances to amend Section 9-2-1 definitions and by revising the Section 9-2-11 through 9-2-13 and authorizing the mayor to sign. Ms. Arnold, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Community Development is proposing revisions to Capel's fence ordinance found in Article 9-2 of the Code of Ordinances. Next slide. These changes were presented to council on November 10 in work session, and the discussion included some, a discussion of fence height and setback. Next slide. The biggest change is that we will be adding the pool fence regulations from the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, also found in Chapter 15 of the code, into the fence ordinance. We believe that the fence ordinance is the best place for all of these regulations, so that everything pertaining to fences will be all in one place. Next slide. We're making some clarifications on when fence permits are or aren't required. The rule currently states if you're replacing less than 50% of your fence, you do not need to get a fence permit. We're adding to that by stipulating that that is within a six-month period. We are also creating some exceptions to the exemption from permitting. A permit is always required, no matter how much you're replacing, if you have a pool or spa, if your fence abuts a public street at the side or rear, or if you're making any changes from the original, including height, location, or materials. We're also going on to clarify that in instances where a permit is not required, you still have to follow all of the provisions of this ordinance. Next slide, please. The existing maximum fence height is eight feet. We recognize that fence pickets commonly come at eight-foot length, and that top trim and some clearance from the bottom are desirable. There must be some tolerance for this. At council's advisement, we are proposing to increase the maximum total height to nine feet. Next slide, please. We're also addressing the aesthetic consistency of fences facing streets. Any fence facing a public street must have the posts and rails facing the inside, and that this is not for alleys. We're just talking about street. Next slide. On the November 10 work session, we discussed with council a potential variance to the required five-foot setbacks from alleys to allow for sliding driveway gates. Since then, the Public Works Department has provided input. We are not recommending any exception to the five-foot setback rule be made at this time in order to allow for plenty of room for alley maintenance. Next slide. Community Development believes these changes will be of value to the safety and appearance of the community. Community Development recommends the approval of these changes to Article 9-2 Capel's Fence Regulations. Next slide. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Council, any questions or comments? Again, we had plenty of conversation about this in work session, so if there are no questions or comments, I would be happy to accept a motion. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Agenda Item 13.
Is there a second? Councilmember Matthew. All in favor.
Long, Hannah Jose Smith, Mays, Roden, Yingling, Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help. Item 14, this is a public hearing. Consider approval of an ordinance designating Veradesk LLC reinvestment zone number 111 pursuant to Section 312.201 of the Property Redevelopment and Tax Abatement Act and authorizing the mayor to sign. And we have Mindy Hurley here to walk us through this. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, once again, Mayor and Council. I'm going to do this presentation. It really applies to item 14, 15, and 16, which we can consider separately, but the same presentation applies to all three. So, Julie, if you don't mind starting that presentation. Thank you. Okay, so thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about the incentive package for Veradesk. I'm going to start by giving you a little background on Veradesk, which now goes by the name Berry after they were rebranded earlier this year. Berry started as Veradesk in 2013 in Capel. Jason McCann, who is Berry's current CEO, had the idea for a sit-stand desk. The sit-stand desk became so popular that they outgrew their original location, which was shared space with Jimmy Industries. They moved to their current location with approximately 90 employees. The Veradesk product grew quickly in popularity, which caused them to expand their offerings to include all types of products that provide flexible office-based solutions. Their products today are in 98% of the Fortune 500 companies in the United States, and they sell their products to organizations in over 120 countries globally. So when they say they have a fan base worldwide, it really is true. And so that brings us today. With 301 employees currently, they have outgrown their existing space. Next slide, please. So they're ready to construct a new corporate headquarters that can accommodate their space needs for today and into the future. They are looking to construct a building anywhere from 140,000 square feet to 180,000 square feet in size. They will be adding $35 million in capital investment, and they will be adding 350 additional jobs at their new location with an annual salary of $80,000 or more. They will use this space as their corporate headquarters and also as one of their popular Berry spaces until such time arises that they need the entire space for themselves. They've done an extensive site search to find the best location for their growing business, and one of the locations that has been in consideration is the northeast corner of Freeport Parkway and State Highway 121. Next slide, please. So the area highlighted in yellow on this map is the location that's under consideration in Capel. Next slide, please. So Berry started here and would like to make Capel its permanent home, but given this location, their final choice is heavily dependent on the council passing the incentive package that's being presented to you this evening. The complete incentive package includes a tax abatement agreement as well as an economic development incentive agreement. In order to pass a tax abatement, you must hold a public hearing to pass an ordinance that creates a reinvestment zone. So that's why this item number 14 is a public hearing tonight, and passing this ordinance will create reinvestment zone number 111. This has been a highly competitive process because Berry has been highly sought after by surrounding communities. But for Capel, Berry's been so much more than any numbers on paper will ever show you. They've been a tremendous corporate partner that has done tremendous things for Capel ISD, other businesses in the community and the city. They have brought corporations in from all over the world to Capel to see their products, eat in our restaurants, and stay in our hotels. This not only puts dollars back into our local economy, but it also provides global recognition for Capel with other companies that might consider locating in Capel in the future. They have a great workforce with high salaries that give back to the community through things like mentorships in the schools and volunteering locally. But they also put money back into the economy by buying homes, eating in restaurants, and shopping in our stores. And finally, opportunities to have the corporate headquarters for great brands don't happen often. So I'm excited about this opportunity to keep Berry in Capel. Next slide, please. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know this is just the public hearing portion to pass the ordinance, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, I will enter Councilmember Yingling.
I'm going to redo that because I turned my mic on now. I'd like to close the public hearing and approve item number 14.
Thank you. Is there a second? By Councilmember Mays. All in favor.
Long, Hannah Jose Smith, Mays, Roden, Yingling, Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Hurley, you want to read in 15 and 16, and then walk us through those as well?
Item 15 is consider approval of a resolution approving a tax abatement agreement between the city of Capel and Veradesk LLC and authorizing the mayor to sign. And item 16 is consider approval of an economic development agreement by and between the city of Capel and Veradesk LLC and authorize the mayor to sign. For item 15, this is a resolution you're passing that will pass the tax abatement agreement. And then for item 16, that is the component piece, which is the economic development agreement between the city and Veradesk. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Comments? Councilmember Roden.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say a couple of things about this abatement. I probably sound a little bit like a hypocrite after spending over a decade on economic development, promoting our abatements, and then almost a decade on this council approving those abatements. Frankly, I hate the fact that we give abatements. I wish that that was not allowed by any city, and then we'd have a level playing field for private businesses to compete without the involvement of public entities. But the reality is that's just not the case. I have people tell me, well, if we just stay out of it, we're such a great location, businesses will come. And that is true, but then we have absolutely no input as to the types of businesses that come to our community and the highest and best use of this type of property. The reality is with the development to our south that's in the city of Dallas, and the amenities that are available there, it's difficult for us to compete with those amenities. And with the city to our west, which has free land to become a basis of some of those developments, it's tough to compete with those developments. And so we have And so we have to be involved in this game of trying to incentivize good businesses like Vary, as you heard in Ms. Hurley's presentation, who have been great corporate citizens and represent the city well. I'm always concerned when we give a long-term commitment like this, but I think back to feeling that same concern when we gave a commitment to heartache to come to town, thinking, good gosh, I can't believe we're making that kind of commitment. And that investment has paid over 10, 100-fold for the city. And so there are times to be aggressive and to be bold, and I think this is one of these times for a corporate citizen that has been as involved and as supportive not only of the city, but of our school district and other charitable events here in the city. So I just felt like I wanted to take a minute and explain why I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Anyone else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Yingling?
I move to approve item number 15 and 16.
Is there a second? Mayor Protem Hill? All in favor?
Long, Kena, Ossie, Smith, Mays, Roden, Yingling, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed the motion carries.
Thank you very much. We look forward to welcoming them into our city and seeing some movement on that property. Wouldn't that be fun? Thank you very much, Ms. Hurley.
Thank you.
Item 17. Consider approval of an ordinance extending the moratorium against enforcement on sections 6-5-3A, 6-15-4, and 16-15-5, 3A and B and J through M, 4 and 8. Article 16 Business Regulations of the Chapters 6 through 15 Temporary Signs for a period of time until June 30, 2021 and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Do that again. Mayor, do you mind repeating that?
I couldn't quite, your mic was off, I couldn't hear. Hey, Ms. Hurley, do you want to read that into the record? No?
I think you did a nice job.
Ah, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'll present this one now. Next slide, please, Julie. So on May 12 of this year, City Council, oh, I'm sorry, will you go back one slide? Okay, thank you. On May 12 of this year, City Council approved an ordinance that declared a moratorium on enforcement on certain sections of Article 16, Chapter 6 of the City of Capel Code of Ordinances that pertains to on-premise temporary signs. Essentially, businesses were allowed to have temporary signs on their premises that they are not, that they are otherwise not allowed to have. Temporary signs cannot be placed off-premise or in the right-of-way, and the current ordinance is set to expire on December 31 of 2020. Next slide, please. So due to COVID-19 and the restrictions that have been in place, many businesses have utilized this opportunity to place additional signage on their property to advertise that they are open and to grab the attention of patrons passing by. So with some of this restriction still in place, limiting their service offerings, the city would like to pass a new ordinance extending the expiration date on the existing ordinance. If you pass this ordinance tonight, the expiration date will now be June 30, 2021, or until the expiration of the Governor's Proclamation of Disaster related to coronavirus-19 pandemic as extended, or the expiration of Governor Executive Orders 32, 29, and 10, whichever one of those comes first. But as always, council has the ability to repeal this ordinance at any time if they deem necessary. Next slide. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Mays?
Just a comment, you know, back in, what was it, June, when we approved this, I was kind of curious about how the city was going to look. Quite honestly, driving around daily, I see the signs, they're not, they're not bad. In fact, if they're helping the business, they're well worth it. So I, you know, this is a good thing to do for our business community. They need all the help that we can give them right now.
So true. Councilmember Matthew? Oh, we need a motion first.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Agenda Item Number 17?
17, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Mays? All in favor?
Long, Kena, Ossie, Smith, Mays, Roden, Yingling, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item 18 has been pulled, and we will consider that at a later date or not, it's just pulled. Item 19. Consider approval of a resolution of the City of Capel in support of the DART Area Rapid Transit Resolution Numbers 200100 and 200086 related to the adoption of the Silver Line Light Rail Alignment, providing for the authorization to exercise eminent domain to acquire the right-of-way within the corporate limits and authorizing the mayor to sign. And we have Ms. Leach here to walk us through this. Welcome back.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Okay, could y'all hear me now?
Much better.
Okay, perfect. Only took me nine months to figure out all the audio inputs for this. So thank you, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to present a resolution for your consideration. That is an administrative requirement related to the DART's right to exercise eminent domain for the Silver Line project. The alignment for the Silver Line will impact 15 properties in Capel. Those locations are essentially to the west of South Denton Tap Road. Those acquisition activities are solely coordinated and carried out by DART. The city has no official role regarding the actual acquisition process for any of the properties that are referenced in the resolutions this evening. However, DART is unique in that their enabling legislation does require that they have its eminent domain resolution approved by the governmental entity where the property resides, which in this case, within the corporate limits of City of Capel, before they can begin their process for acquiring those properties that are necessary for any one of their rail projects. The DART Board approved the resolutions that are referenced in the resolution at their August and September meetings. Excuse me. And this action does not guarantee that all of those properties that are listed in those resolutions are automatically set for eminent domain. Essentially, what this does is clears the path for DART to start the process, to send the formal offer letters and begin those formal negotiations regarding the acquisitions. Eminent domain is, of course, one of the options available, but is not the go-to in terms of a certainty as they work through that process with each of those individual property owners. The action by the council tonight essentially authorizes DART to exercise their own power of eminent domain on properties located within our corporate limits. If you'll recall, going back to February, council did approve a similar resolution to this in February for two properties, and we do expect there to be one more of these resolutions, probably sometime in the first quarter of the calendar year for the final two properties related to the new alignment for the Silver Line. I have tonight with us from DART, Leticia Delgado and Greg Althoff, who have, will be able to answer any questions that you might have specific to any of the acquisitions, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you might have related to the information presented tonight.
Thank you very, very much. Council, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Mays?
I'm going to put a slight comment in here, so to preface that. As much as I hate to see eminent domain exercised for the acquisition of any property, there is a reason for the, for the enablement of a eminent domain taking. And I think the propagation or the access to the citizens of the area, to the Dallas Area Rapid Transit overrides the, that taking of the properties. So even though I don't like the concept of eminent domain, I think it is appropriate in this case, and I move to approve item number 19.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Roden? All in favor?
Long, Kena, Ossie, Smith, Mays, Roden, Yingling, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the people from DART to be in here, to be available to answer any questions. Please do not think that since we didn't ask any questions, we are not appreciative, but thank you very much. Item 20. Consider approval of the legislative agenda for the upcoming 87th Regulator's Legislative Session. Mr. Land?
Mayor and Council, as you are aware, this coming January, the state legislature will be meeting during the course of that, what do you want to call it, exciting five months of adventure. We will have various subjects that are important to the citizens of Capel. We have had this item on your radar for the last basically two months, talking about legislative priorities. And based on the input we have received, there are just a few items, while there are quite a few listed as priorities, there are just a few that really rise to the top. The first being the sales tax sourcing legislation. We are working with Mr. Crowell to introduce legislation that affirms existing statutes so that origin sourcing is the primary way sales tax is charged in the state of Texas, which is how it's currently written, but it is not how the Rule 3.334 was written. So we will be emphasizing that effort throughout the entire five months. We will also be doing some work on some legislation that we got very close in the last session, and that was to update the street sales and use tax, maintenance tax, to allow it to be voted on every 10 years instead of every four years. The idea there is that we would align it with our crime control district so that we are minimizing the number of times we have to host an election, just because elections are fairly expensive to host. So that is something we will continue to work on. There are several other components in the legislative priorities we will be watching for, specifically the short-term rental legislation that was introduced in 2019, which would have taken the ability of the city to monitor and gain compliance with short-term rentals in our neighborhoods. So we'll be working to make sure that that doesn't happen. And then as far as the local decisions, our home, our decisions, just working with our state legislatures on, legislature on, in essence, what is referred to as lobbying. And there's a lot of talk about taxpayer-funded lobbying. If you read the language that the Senate hearing was held and the charge that was given to the House, you know, I just find it very fascinating, the broadness of the language is that anything they deem is not in the best interest of the taxpayer. So notice I said anything "they deem." It's not what you, as elected officials here in the City of Capel or other municipalities deem are important, it's what they deem is important. There was a hearing today, which you can go online, it's recorded, you can watch, that was held by the Senate, where there were those who are opposed to, quote, "taxpayer-funded" lobbying. And there were some folks there who also spoke in support of advocacy on behalf of citizens by local officials. One of the main issues is where is the line between education and advocacy? Another issue is, and we'll talk about this in reference to the sales tax sourcing legislation, how is a local municipality supposed to spend funds, or time, or manpower in reaching 150 state representatives to advocate or educate why this legislation is important, for example, or 31 senators? So there was not a clear answer on that question today, as I understand it. They were just taking public testimony and asking questions. But I know that this is something that the North Texas Commission, that the Texas Municipal League, that many associations that are associated with public entities are, you know, adamantly following for the simple reason is that you too have a voice as an elected official by the citizens of, in this case, Capel, and as such, you should have the right to be able to speak and advocate on behalf of those citizens and not necessarily have it regulated by a state legislature. The other issue that was brought up today is, okay, let's just say that the state of Texas does determine that there is no such thing as taxpayer-funded lobbying. The point that was raised today is, that would be, all right, if that happens, then take a city like Capel, there were anywhere from 5,000 to 6,000 bills that get introduced, you know, this last session. How would you have monitored those? Well, one way to do that is you would hire a staff member to become a government relations person who does nothing but watch for bills that impact the cities. And I don't remember what the number is, but it's been, you know, exponentially growing about the number of bills, all the way from municipal court to police, and think about some of the things that are going on there, to fire departments, to code compliance, to, I mean, you name it, and we get monitored and legislated about it. So how would that happen? So our real emphasis will be on sales tax sourcing. I mean, that's where our main emphasis has to be, but we'll be watching the other bills too. So, Mayor, tonight, basically what you would be doing is just adopting these, quote, priorities with the understanding that there are some that are more important than others.
Thank you. We've had a lot of conversation about these, and they really don't change that much from session to session. Are there any questions or comments about the legislative priorities? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Mays?
I move, I move to approve item number 20.
Is there a second? Councilmember Yingling? That is your last act. Oh, you do have a, okay, that's your last motion. All in favor?
Long, Kena, Ossie, Smith, Mays, Roden, Yingling, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed the motion carries.
Maybe.
Ask the vote.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Just joking.
It's 2020, anything can happen. Number 21. City Managers Report. Project Updates and Future Agendas.
Mayor, just to, just bring you up to speed on several projects. Airline reconstruction continues. They are in the process of installing the water line and coordinating right-of-way permits for the relocation of franchise utilities. The project completion timeline is still the winter of '21. Freeport basically is complete with the exception of some landscaping, pedestrian handrails at the railroad crossing. So the project is amazing, it looks great as you drive through that area, the bridge curve, we know makes a huge difference, and so we appreciate the patience that everybody had on that. The intersection improvement projects, the next one that's going to be a positive impact on our traffic flow. Bids were received and open, and the city council consideration will be on January 12. Based on my understanding, they came in about right where we expected them to, so there was no surprises on the pricing. So utility relocations could occur during the entire corridor once they begin, so when the time comes, we'll keep you informed, but if you can just imagine the cones and everything that you've seen, just know that that's going to be happening, and we are not doing all the intersections at the same time. So we won't create that tense, that tension on the roadways. Design is complete on the Stream G6 and Denton Creek Grade Control. If you remember when we did the stormwater plan, the, at Denton Creek, there was a control structure that needed to be there, and then Stream G6 is the one that's near Moore Road and East Beltline. So those projects are continuing to move forward. So we expect the bids to be done in about six to eight weeks. And then finally, Fire Station 4, construction is moving along. If you haven't gone out to see it, it's a beautiful facility, and the projection is that they'll start moving in by the end of January and become operational in February. So they're moving forward, and we're really excited about So they're moving forward, and we're really excited about that particular project. So one that the community can be very proud of in terms of service area, too. That's it, Mayor.
Very good, very good. It's not quite on the beaten track, so you have to kind of go out of your way to go and see it. I'm going to have to make that, because I know it's been a couple of months since I've been out there. It's probably dramatically different. Thank you. Are there any questions for the city manager? None? Okay. Item 22, mayor and council reports about recent or upcoming events. For upcoming events, we have, for more than 20 years, the Capel community has come together for Make a Child Smile by donating gifts to deserving children in the Capel ISD. Though many things have changed this year, the community's dedication to assisting the residents in need has not. To help ensure that the giving spirit continues to flourish while also protecting the health and safety of residents, the city of Capel has announced a makeover to this year's Make a Child Smile program. The deadline has been extended, there are still a few who have not been selected. So we're extending the deadline through Monday, December 14th. So visit makeachildsmilecapel.com to select a virtual ornament that includes a child's gift preference, clothes sizes, and more. Simply fill in your contact information and submit your request to grant a child's wish purchasing clothes and/or toys for the child. The program's goal is to provide at least one toy and one article of clothing for each child. When you are ready to return your gift, you contact Andrea Parker at aparker@capeltx.gov to schedule an appointment for drop-off. Please return all wrapped gifts in an opaque bag with the family number, gender, and age of the child attached to the bag so that the city manager's office, to the city manager's office, no later than Monday, December 14th. City staff will deliver the gifts prior to Christmas. For more information, you can call 972-304-7016, or email aparker@capeltx.gov. We also have a shop Capel this holiday season. You can shop for a chance to win gift cards at the Capel business. Spend $200 or more at local businesses and restaurants through December 31st. Visit capeltx.gov-buyincapel for information on how to submit photos of your receipt by 5:00 PM on Wednesday, January 6, 2021, and you will be entered into a drawing. In addition to the grand prize drawing of a $200 gift certificate to a Capel business, three drawings will be held for a $100 gift card. The winners will be notified via email or phone to arrange prize pickup. For more information, again, capeltx.gov/buyincapel, or call 972-304-3678. And last but not least, with many shopping malls and shopping centers not having a Santa this year, Santa knows, or Santa helper this year, Santa knows he might not be able to see as many kiddos in person this year. So the Cosby Library and Community Commons have volunteered to be a letter drop-off location for Mr. Claus. Santa has set up a holiday mailbox where Capel children can mail their gift wishes to the North Pole at the Cosby Library. Santa will also be making an appearance virtually at the library for a Christmas Q&amp;A where he will respond to children's holiday questions. Kids can drop off their letters in the large holiday mailbox outside Cosby Library anytime through December 18th. Questions for Santa's Q&amp;A session at the library can also be dropped off at the library's front desk through December 11th. Santa and Mrs. Claus have agreed to drop by the library to read a story and answer your questions. On December 16th, a link to their video will be posted in the library Facebook and Twitter pages. Again, submit your questions by filling out a form found at capeltx.gov/holidays, or drop your inquiry in the Santa box at the library by December 11th. Are there any other events that council has to, or done?
No, but I do have a question.
Yes.
Does anybody know where to buy an opaque bag? Where do you buy opaque bags? Have you ever purchased?
I can't see through bags.
Oh, can't see-through bag, okay, thank you.
Not clear.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, that's going to be her last question?
No, I got a few more. I got a few more.
Item 23, council committee reports. Item A, the report on North Central Texas Council of Governments, Councilmember Mace.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, of all the different groups I've represented, I think that the NCT COG has been probably the most impacted from the pandemic, from the standpoint that the way that they normally operated was to get out, go to meetings, represent, talk, and be an advocate. All that came to an end, and quite honestly, they've coped quite well. All of their meetings have gone online, all of their schedules are posted online. But they're still struggling with some of the features and functions that they serve. For example, Michael Morris was quoted in our paper recently, talking about how transportation usage had dropped. Well, to take that a step further, COG does a lot of studies for the different member cities and counties in the region, and all of those studies for this year, 2020, and probably 2021, are going to be invalidated just due to the lack of traffic. Our own experience here that Ms. Hurley can attest to is our own transportation ride-sharing program from the DART stations through Lyft and Uber had significantly lower ridership, and that really doesn't give us a good clue on how that's going to go. So the Transportation Department as a minimum at COG has been challenged, but I got to hand it to them, they have adapted to the virtual meeting quite well. All of their meetings continue to be held on schedule, and those schedules remain on their website and are available to the public. And with nothing else to report, I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Report on the North Texas Commission, Councilmember Yingling.
Thank you, Mayor. Not too much to report, just that North Texas Commission is preparing for the 87th legislative session on January 12th, 2021. And on January 10th, two days before, NTC will host a webinar with all four of the county judges. So that should be an interesting webinar. I'm going to guess there's going to be a lot of COVID updates on that one, so that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And then a report for the Capel Historical Society from Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. The society has not met since early 2020, probably won't meet for a while now. But they did manage to online vote for and elect a new set of officers for the coming year. Their year runs from 1st of September around to the end of March, May, end of May. So anyway, so they are functioning, and the new officers have met, and they're working on their assignments. So even though there's no movement in the park over there, there's plenty on computers. So everyone's still alive, and to my knowledge, no one has gotten COVID, so we're fortunate.
Thank you very much. Are there any public service announcements?
I just want to say two last things before I leave this seat. Two people I'd like to say something to. Ashley, congratulations on your promotion this year. I think we've all seen you go from your last position up to this, and we watched you grow, so I'm excited to see where you're going to go from here. You've done a great job, and I will miss seeing you around, so. And then Mr. Hager.
Yes.
You know, I think I've known you longer than anybody here in this city. We used to be neighbors. And so when I got on council, I got to see you a lot more lately, so I will miss seeing you around, and I know that we will continue our friendship, even though I won't see you as much, but.
I know where you live.
You know where I live, and it's been a joy spending the last six and a half years with you, so.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Then, our final item is necessary action from executive session, and we have Mr. Hager here to walk us through an item from executive session.
Thank you. And to Councilmember Yingling, yes, I enjoyed the time we spent here, but I enjoyed the time we spent as neighbors and raising our children, who are basically the same age, and enjoying the company of you and your husband for Stacy and I, it was a good time Cypress Waters is the topic as a result of the executive session presentation to council. If you'll indulge me for a few minutes, I will give you some background for not only you, but for the members of the public. In 2004, the city received a phone call to the city manager's office informing us that someone had bought the Luminate power plant site and 350 acres there. And after some time, I'm showing my age in the city, but the city had made an inquiry about two years prior to that about buying that site. The rumor was that that factory and energy plant was going to be decommissioned, and that that property was no longer going to be used for that site. And then city manager Jim Witt had made inquiry, and they were told that Luminate, under no circumstances, would ever sell that property. And then we received a phone call in September of 2004 informing us that they had sold to the Crow Billingsley interest 350 acres. That was cause for concern, because the more we delved into what was going on there, it looked like there was a number of multifamily residential apartments, which the Crow Billingsley interests are famous for, and mixed-use developments, which they would have there, and that it would negatively impact our school system that was basically at capacity at the time. So Mr. Witt reached out to Jeff Turner, who was the superintendent at that time, to inform him that we were about to have a serious problem that would negatively impact our school system. And at that point, the city council and the city, or the school district, got together and said, this is serious, it would affect, negatively impact our school system, which negatively impacts our community. And so we attempted to negotiate with Billingsleys in their interest to keep from this from happening, and that was unsuccessful. As a result, we were involved in having to review the possibility of using our eminent domain authority to try to stop this, and hired some fairly significant legal minds to assist us in that regard. And there was basically 2004 through 2009, and later, there was some serious litigation, which the town spent considerable energy. There was a lot of angst, not knowing what was going to happen. And in the meantime, there was another 1,350 acres, which ended up being purchased by the Crow Billingsleys. We had an opportunity, we made a bid for those 1,350 acres. We were unsuccessful. A doubting Thomas would say that maybe there was insider information at Luminate, but I'll leave it at that. But we were unsuccessful, and only by a few pennies missed getting that bid, which we would have owned and controlled that property, which would have greatly enhanced our ability to not be where we are today. Some of the things that would impact us, that this would have a significant impact on Denton Tap Road because of the volume of traffic that may be dumped out there. Obviously, I've mentioned the school district. There would be impact on our school system, obviously, as well as our park and libraries. We've had a fine tradition in our community of sharing, even though if you did not live in the city of Capel, many of our community amenities with those that are in the school district that get to attend our schools, in order to build a sense of community, which your city is very proud. So since that would have happened, then we would have had all these children and people that live actually in Dallas be potentially exposed to wanting to be members of our community and participating in our city leagues, use our libraries, use our rec center, use our other city facilities, which are supported by the citizens of Capel. So that there was a number of things that would impact our public services. We have in our local agreements with all of our surrounding communities, one of which is Dallas. So if their fire and police departments had to respond to a call with all of the residential units that were being proposed, it may have a significant impact. So there's huge significant impacts that this community faced in 2004 and 2005 as a result of the Crow Billingsley acquisition and their plans. So with that, basically on the eve of trial in this matter, when we were getting ready to go to trial, it was determined that maybe a negotiated resolution would be a better resolution for our community. Those negotiations ran into by the city manager and a representative of the council, and they met with the Billingsley representative, and they were to reach an accord, and whereby the city would purchase what I call the storage tract, you call North Lake, as well as the dam and some of the surrounding property at later points in time. That property was subject to what lawyers would refer to as a rofer, which means right of first refusal. Mr. Billingsley recognizing that he was willing to sell us some of the land in exchange for us to get a cap on the number of residential units. Not only a cap in terms of the number of units, but the cap on the kind of units that would be built. They're not four- and five-bedroom units, they were one-bedroom units. And that translates into less children eligible, if you will, for inclusion in our school district. And we also were able to negotiate for the school district, the availability to have a future high school site if we needed it, a future elementary site if we needed it, and a future middle school site if we needed it, as a result of generation. So our school district got to be taken care of also, and had the right to purchase that property from the Billingsleys. So at that point, we went to our community, and we asked them to finance the purchase of that land. And we acquired basically 500 acres, including the storage tract and the dam, and had the right to access water to keep the lake full. And we saw that maybe we might have an opportunity to recoup some of that money by ownership of that property. But I don't think there's any doubt that our community, and voters, and this council, and your predecessors knew what they were buying when they spent that money. We were buying the cap. We were buying the opportunity to protect our school system, and therefore protect our community, because you is well aware that communities such as ours take great pride in their school, and people live here because of the school, and there is a sense of community built around the school. So, wow, that's a lot of money. You've done what you've set out to do, and it's been expensive. Over the course of time, we have sold some of the property back to the Billingsleys under their right of first refusal. We've adjusted the size of the lake. We've spent money to try to protect the lake so that it became an amenity not only for our community, but for the Cypress Waters community, as its apparent success has gone on. So at this stage, we've acquired that property, it's given us a seat at the table for the DART station you talked about tonight, which is a very important asset for our community to have, that Capel station at Cypress Waters. We normally would not have had a seat at the table, we would not have negotiated the silver. the silver line, we would not have the sound walls that, that we're getting in quiet zones, and the other amenities that come with the DART acquisition, because we wouldn't have been able to negotiate. So we've gotten that benefit from the acquisition of this property as well. We're at a point where the Billingsley's desire to buy back through the property that we are holding, the storage track, the dam, the pump station that accesses the water, as well as what I refer to as the sliver track, which is the property along Beltline, and the western property that's west of the old fire, or the, the energy facility, the plant. And so they have agreed to buy that property for the sum of $10,147,000. We have visited over this ad nauseam over the last four years with them. We're in a position that the council wanted to consider, there was, we had to consider forming a drainage district for the lake and the dam. The Billingsley's were looking for us to do that, there was reasons for why we would want to, we, the city, would want to do that, but the Billingsley's have now agreed to take that responsibility, so that's one less burden that we have out there at the lake. They've agreed to form that special utility district through the county, through the county government. At this point, we still own the building, so we have to participate in that project with them, with the county. But they have spoken with the, the representative from, from the county that represents our district, and have gotten a favorable response from them to do this. The Billingsley's have agreed to put up their money to initially finance the district, which is obviously favorable to us. So what I'm going to ask you to do tonight is to authorize me to form, to promulgate and draft the contract to sell the remaining acreage of about 430 acres, plus or minus, to the Billingsley interest, and divest ourselves of that property, except for the DART site and the right-of-way, except for some of the easements that had to be adjusted for Atmos, and for one acre that we'll call Bob's folly for tonight, in order for us to enforce the deed restrictions. It's just a matter of, of property law that in order to have a deed restriction, you have to retain what they call the servant servitude and, and the dominant estate, and they have to be separate. And so we, and since the benefit is to us, we're the dominant estate, and Henry's the servant estate, which I'm sure he wouldn't like to hear, but he is the servant tonight. And that allows us to enforce that deed restriction, which is very important to us. The property that we will sell back to the Billingsley's will have that cap in place, and it will guarantee that, that no more units will be built in excess of the cap for the entire Cypress Water development, which is capped under our previous agreements with them. That point was, been made abundantly clear to Mr. Billingsley and Ms. Crow on more than one occasion. They, they're fine and very accepting of that cap and wish to, to move on. So I will ask you to consider that motion, I will read it into the record and be happy to answer any questions that you or the council may have.
Do you want to read it into the record?
I will, Mayor.
And then ask for questions?
The motion is to authorize the city attorney's office to draft a contract to sell approximately 431 acres of real property at North Lake to the Billingsley interests for a price of $10,147,000, as previously offered, less the acreage for a DART transit station and right-of-way for its road connection to Beltline, subject to the Atmos easements and easements of record for Luminate and Encore, and to reserve a one-acre parcel to be located on the remaining property, to authorize the city manager to execute such agreement, and to prepare the required assignments of water rights, irrigation rights, and contracts associated with the storage track and dam, and to assist the purchaser, I ask the city manager and staff to assist the purchaser to constitute a drainage or utility special district within Dallas County.
I wanted to say amen.
Amen.
The motion has been read. Does anyone want to? Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Those of you who are watching online, I just want to give you a brief overview in addition.
Wait, we need a, we need a motion first.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Roden.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move as read into the record by Mr. Hager to move as he's read into the record.
Thank you. We have a second by Councilmember Hina Jose Smith. Now, Councilmember Matthew.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just want to give a brief overview in addition to what the city attorney said. In 2008, city of Capel purchased 494 acres for approximately $26 million. The legal costs were about 3.9 million, and spill-away reclamation was about 3.3 million, channel rehabilitation was about .84 million, so the total cost to the city, approximately $34 million. In 2017, the city sold 44.9 acres back to Billingsley for $1.7 million. Today, in 2020, we are talking about selling the remaining acres back to Billingsley for $10.1 million. I'm in favor of advertising on open market to get a fair appraisal. However, I, we have been advised by the city attorney that we are not able to advertise the property for sale and get bids from open market due to first refusal clause from Billingsley. City has agreed to sell at $2.50 for square feet back in 2008 back to Billingsley. If I stated anything incorrectly, please correct. Thank you.
Mr. Roden, Councilmember Roden. You are Mr. Roden, too.
Mr. Hager, I appreciate your, your description of 20 years of history in, in about 10 minutes. I think that's very helpful for folks who may be new in town to understand what's happened, and I just want to say I appreciate those that came before us for a lot of work and a lot of vision, really, in cooperation with the school district to, to make this happen. I think it's important not to look at this as a, as a business deal that the city did, but, but in fact, a effort to protect our future and protect the future of the school district, and to understand that us selling this property now is not a capitulation in any way, but I think a recognition that what we set out to do, which was to protect the school district and to make sure that these residential caps are in place for perpetuity, and to give us leverage, if you will, with DART to assure that we were able to protect our citizens as the rail line came through, that we've achieved those goals, and that it really doesn't make sense beyond that for the city of Capel to own and to maintain a dam and a lake in another city, and to incur those ongoing costs for years and years to come. And I think that in some degree, this was anticipated, and that's why this right of first refusal was in place. And so this is a good next step, and I know that both our city attorney and this council will be glad to move on and not deal with this again in the future. So again, this is not a capitulation, but I think a recognition of success.
Thank you very much. Well said. Councilmember Mace.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the, the things that I think Mr. Hager couldn't quite bring forth was the amount of emotion that went through this whole process, starting back in 2004. This was a very divisive topic. This was not done lightly, it was not done without a lot of thought, with a lot of work, a lot of presence, and to Councilmember Roden's point, the plans that were put in place, I'm not sure that everything was understood back then about what was going to come to fruition. But yes, we've achieved the, the cap on, on the population growth, the student growth in the, the Cypress Waters area. We've actually ended up with a DART station that we were not counting on, that is, is due in part to our actions that were taken 15 years ago. We've been able to mitigate the costs that we were going to incur on the maintenance of the lake and the water and the dam. So the way I look at it, this has been a win-win-win all the way around, so I'm very much in support of this motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I came into this discussion today at the executive meeting to ask all this question, but you all answering the question, I have a better feel for this today, so, and I also understand from our city manager that we will be saving 2.67 in our tax rate for penny, 2.67 cents by paying off the bond, so I'm in favor of this deal.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Long, Hina Jose Smith, Mace, Roden, Yingling, Matthew Hill in favor and unopposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, there is no other business to come before us. Want to say an extra thank you and farewell to Councilmember Yingling. We appreciate your service, and the next time we're all together, this group will look different. We don't know what it's going to look like, but it'll be different. So thank you again, and thank you to all who participated today, and the time is 9:21, and we are adjourned. Thank you.